January ninth, twenty twenty-three, select board meeting. This meeting is being recorded.
Good evening. Welcome to the select board meeting for the town of Southwick for Monday, January ninth, twenty twenty-three. Those present, myself, Russell S. Fox as chairman, vice chairman Doug Mogulyn, Jason Perron, administrative assistant, Robin Solak. I'd like to begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance and we have a member of our regional school come into here. Pat Jobb, if you could start us off, sir.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pat. Before we go to public comments and we're not starting off the new year very well. I'd like to talk about three people who passed away, unfortunately, the first being Cal Chungalo, a former resident of the town of Southwick, who, when he retired, moved out of state, is a former planning board member, former member of the capital expenditures committee. We also have longtime resident, local businessman, and former water commissioner Warren Baker Senior, who passed away past couple of days. And I was just notified this afternoon of the passing of one of our Gold Star Mothers, Marie Alamed, at the age of ninety-eight. Marie was at every single Veterans Memorial Day till she physically couldn't, and that was just, I think, this year. She was very active in our auxiliary at the American Legion. So if we could please have a moment of silence for those three people. Thank you. Now, public comments, this gives anyone that's not on the agenda that would like to make a statement to the select board, this is your opportunity. I ask if anybody that's here in the room that wants to speak, if they'd please state their name and address, and then we'll go to people on Zoom. I see a hand up. Pat Jobb.
Patrick Jobb, thirty-four, Deer Run, Southwick. This is in regards to placing enough speed limit signs in the neighborhood, all been around Deer Run, final, western circle, Warren Lane, Coyote Glen, Morgan Side Drive, Wesley Lane, Partridge Lane, and Patriots Way Development. I included packets of the three. Dear fellow members of the select board, I'm running to you all with my concern and safety hazards that has been an ongoing problem since I built my home in two thousand and four. As a concerned citizen, father of three, and one who works in the field where safety is of the utmost importance, I feel this proposal to place twenty-five mile per hour speed limit signs, the aforementioned neighboring intersecting streets is long overdue. With the amount of people out walking, jogging, biking, et cetera, there's a large amount of human-to-vehicle potential on a daily basis. Add delivery trucks, landscapers, and street parking where the area becomes quite narrow at times, this poses a huge threat for those on foot or bike. So I included a street view in an aerial map of the proposed signage areas in which I'm requesting a study, investigation, and consideration for speed limit signs. Slow children signs, children at play, any signs, you know, that state densely populated, or any signs that warn drivers to slow down. From the map view, you can clearly see there's a potential to gain momentum in several areas throughout the neighborhood, thus increasing the actual speed significance. After speaking with multiple neighbors who have speed concerns and have experienced some sort of near miss, I've come to you all with some sort of awareness posting or place to create a reminder that this is a densely populated neighborhood with many potentials of injury. What I did include is we have over a hundred and seventy houses in that area and any help that you could do, we really appreciate it. Thank you for inviting me.
Thank you, Pat. Robin, I'm gonna give you my thing so that you can have that forward to the chief of police. All right, is there anyone else under public comments? All right, I see no more hands in the room. Is there anybody under public comments on Zoom? Any?
No, sir.
No, sir. All right, then we are going to our meeting. I'm gonna try to knock off a few things before we have a a Verizon poll hearing. For clarification, the legal notice was the hearing to take place at six oh five P M. The agenda is in error, saying six fifteen. It's a typo. So we will be conducting the hearing because we're legally supposed to at six oh five P M. But let me just take care of a few things first. Hopefully, in case there's anyone else that wants to join us. Acknowledge payroll warrant number two, three, one, six, dated one, three, twenty-three, and amount of two hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-five cents. I need a motion to accept the open minute, open session minutes dated twelve nineteen, twenty twenty-two, and one, three, twenty twenty-three.
Doug Mogulyn, so moved.
Jason Perron, second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, I need a motion to accept the executive session minutes dated twelve nineteen, twenty twenty-two, and one, three, twenty twenty-three.
Doug Mogulyn, so moved.
Okay, and if we could pass. That's all right, I'm sorry, sir. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, if we can pass that back. Okay. All right, then we are going to go to the public hearing. I will read the notice. Public hearing, select board, January ninth, twenty twenty-three. Notice is hereby given pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter one sixty-six, Section twenty-two and twenty-two A, that sell, sells, cell co. Partnership D B A Verizon Wireless has submitted a petition to install a small cell wireless antenna with fixtures on a Wimiko pole number one, six, four, located at five, six, seven College Highway in South Massachusetts. Equipment includes antenna, equipment, ads, wires, cables, meter, fiber, D mark box on the pole. Interested party should attend the select board hearing at town hall at six oh five P M on January ninth, twenty twenty-three to hear from the applicant or submit written testimony on the matter. Zoom meeting details will be posted on the town webpage at W W dot Southwick, Mass. dot org. Public meetings and agendas. The petition and plans can be reviewed at the town clerk's office and online at W W dot Southwick, Mass. dot org slash home slash pages slash town documents, select board, town of Southwick, Massachusetts. All the appropriate people were notified by mail, the butters?
Yes, that's correct. The town actually did.
Okay, so, and the correct time was given, six oh five P M. Okay. All right, with that, I need a motion to open the hearing.
Doug Mogulyn, so moved.
Jason Perron, second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, we're going to hear from the applicant, and they have submitted documentation. And I'm sorry, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Of course. My name is Paula Foley. I'm a network consultant with Verizon Wireless. My business address is fifteen Chestnut Street in Worcester, Massachusetts. And with me is Kip DeVito. He is a radio frequency engineer with Verizon Wireless. And also on Zoom is Corey Vaccaro. He is the site acquisition specialist for this proposal.
Thank you.
So as you noted, we have proposed a attachment of a small wireless antenna to an existing utility pole in the public right-of-way at the address five sixty-seven College Highway. This request is virtually the same as the request that we made last year, which the select board approved, for a small cell to be located on Point Grove Road and on Sheep pasture road. The purpose of this proposal is to provide improved wireless capacity and coverage in this area of Southwick, where Horizon's engineers have determined there is diminished service on its network. The equipment will consist of one small canister antenna mounted on the pole at a height of twenty-eight feet with a remote radio unit and an electric meter below on the pole. There will not be any ground-mounted equipment or any ground disturbance. So we respectfully request the select board approve this petition, and we're happy to answer any questions the board or the public may have.
Okay, I'm gonna start with the board first. If there's any questions, concerns, statements?
This is substantially this. I'm sorry, Jason.
No, no.
This is substantially the same exact thing we did on Sheep pasture and Point Grove and Point Grove.
Yes, it is.
Right? Those are the two locations we have so far, right?
Yes, that's correct. The equipment is identical.
Surprised they didn't go a little further up the hill, but I guess this is a download for you guys?
Well, actually, there were a number of poles, utility poles that were examined, and this is the single pole that is capable of having this equipment attached to it. There is electrical equipment on a number of the poles in the area that render those poles unsuitable.
Not those holiday lights.
You had to say.
Were there more added, by the way?
Yes. Finally fixed them. All right, with that, we're gonna open this up to the public. And rather than just say those are four of those against, I'm just gonna open it up in general. Is there anyone in this room? If you could please stand and state your name and address for the record.
Eric Carroll, five, six, nine College Highway. For the record, my neighbors Sue and Tom that are at five, six, seven never received a letter. I forwarded them the copy of the letter and the link and whatnot. But I received it. My other neighbor received it also. Um. I just have a couple of questions. The other locations that are in service right now, Point Grove and Sheep pasture, are they in service or are they proposed to be in service? They are in service.
If you could, if you could speak up just a little louder so people on Zoom could hear.
But they're, they're constructed.
Yes.
One of them is constructed, but they're not in service.
Okay. All right. Okay. And one concern I have is the specifications of the transmitting power, frequency range, power output. I'm assuming it's twenty-four seven power out, I'm assuming, but what is the power output? And what is the, I guess, the pattern of radiation? Does it go all over, or does it, is it spread out? I mean, I know it's three sixty, but it's spread out, or does it go down? Because I'm just concerned about where it's located. My neighbor, Sue and Tom, I mean, they're like right there, and their bedrooms are eye level with that can, where that can's gonna be. I'm a little lower, but still, I'm a little concerned.
Yep. So do you want me to introduce myself for this?
Yeah, I would, yes.
My name is Kip DeVito, an art engineer for Verizon Wireless. I just is plenty, I was gonna drive them along. This antenna is what we call, it has a peanut pattern, so the vision might help, you know, looks like you're the road. So from here, it's gonna be like, kind of like a a peanut, up and down the road. So this antenna is designed to direct its pattern for the road and some of the surrounding buildings in the immediate area. So as far as power is concerned and safety of emissions, we're at a very low fraction of what is allowed by the F and C for emissions, considering like twelve percent of maximal exposure on that. So very low. These small cells do not emit much of anything.
And what is that number that it emits?
I mean, I don't have like an exact, I'm a good power output by the top, by the radio, but then that's affected by cabling, diplexers, and the antenna. So I don't have an exact number of the actual power output, and it's not operating all the time. It operates only when a phone is you know, making a call or it's transmitting. It's not a hundred percent all-time duty cycle.
Okay.
So it's, it's a lot more complicated than, you know, how well powered.
That is great. Okay, but it's not omnidirectional. It's, it's peanut shaped.
Right, and we have, you know, omnidirectional kind of this one, just not be there for this, this location.
Okay. All right.
We deploy thousands of, hundreds of thousands over the country of small cells. They're very about it in our nation, not just us, but the other areas.
And they have very low power. They're not the same type of antenna as you can see on a rooftop or a tower, very low power.
All right, and you don't know what that power is?
I mean, the, the per transmitter, forty watts.
Forty, okay. All right, well, that gives me a range. So, okay.
It's, there's a lot of things to go into. Our radio itself has a composite power of three hundred and twenty watts, but then it's broken up into transmitters and then broken up into carriers. Yeah, cabling, diplexes to it, and you start with losses there, and again, and you kind of, so.
Right. Okay, yeah, that's just my concern. I mean, one, forty watts is not really a lot of power, but it is, but the radiation pattern of the antenna, if you're saying what it is, I feel a little more comfortable around it because it's not pointing, it's not a full Omni circular, it's spread out to follow the road.
Yeah, so the point of this small cell is that road there, that section of road there, it falls in the null of two other macros. So, you know, these two are macros that are
Macros of the towers.
Right, sorry. And you have these sectors, which kind of are pointing in between those is what we would call a null, where you're just like outside of the main, our pattern there. This section of road falls in that null, so like you're shining two flashlights, you know, sort of like shadow.
Okay. All right, and all right, I think that's yes, I, you know, I believe that that was it. My other question was already answered is where the other, if there are any other locations that I could like look at, just look at, but, okay.
Oh, shit.
I think I'm, I'm all set.
Endpoint.
Yeah, if you go to the eighty-two point goal.
Eighty-two point, yeah.
That's right there.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Earl Stanwath, emergency management director, town of Southwick, located sixty-six, nine, Hill Row, the home residence. I'm also a commercial FCC general class licensed engineer. I'd like the specifics on frequency. You answered a lot of the questions that I had, but what is the actual's frequency range?
Yeah, so there's, we're in the seven hundred, mic hertz, the eight fifty, AWS, which is twenty-one hundred, and then PCS, which is nineteen hundred. And I believe this one was C D R S, which is I was right here, four hundred.
I think. I'm just wondering about interference with public safety communications and local broadcast communications or mixing of frequencies that are located in the residence, or if you're driving by the vehicle radio, whether it be public safety or AM, FM broadcast or what have you, we are going to experience any interference driving down through that area. So because you're, you're multiple frequencies, there'll be multiple mixing.
Yeah, so we have licenses, FCC licenses that we are given, so we are only allowed to operate in those frequencies, not outside of this. So we have filters and equipment that make sure of that. Usually what happens, a lot of times, is we get outside interference from other pieces of equipment that are transmitting.
Yeah, it's a two world, it's extreme.
It's, we are, you know, we get this all the time. It's something we have to adhere to by our licenses and then as to that, and if there is, for some reason, any kind of interference, and we can find, figure out that it's us, you know, we work to get it resolved, that's.
I've heard that many times before, but I'll just end it. I'm happy and glad it's not in front of my house because under OSHA, I would not want to have radio, extra radiation generated in my area, but thank you very much.
All right, is there any other comments in the room? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make any statement or question, or ask any question?
I've seen your answer.
Okay. Ben. You gentlemen got all your answers? Okay, then I'm gonna ask for a motion.
You need a clarification.
Oh, yeah. What was the name of your neighbors that did not get?
Um, Sue, Kelly and Tom don't know his last, he has a different last name, they're five, six, seven. Their house is smack right, I mean, the, the telephone pole, the utility pole is right up against their mailbox.
Yeah, because I see Herblys are right there. They got it. J D's got it, Otto. You know.
On the other list?
It's Thomas and Susan.
Tom and Susan Kelly, or, yeah.
Susan Kelly and Thomas Miller.
Yes, here we go, Tom Miller. I reached out to them. They didn't get a notice, but I sent them a photograph of my notice, and I also sent them the link to the documentation on the Southwick, town of Southwick website, so they could look at the plans.
Yeah. I don't understand why they didn't get it, but, you know, but there are some LLCs here, so I don't, I don't know, so. But at least you, you did notify them.
Yes, I did, yeah.
Okay.
And my neighbor next to me, Sandra Organos, he, she received the notice.
Yeah.
The one that reached out to me first.
She's on it, correct.
So she, she got it.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not sure because it looks like everybody in that area got the notification, but but we will double check on that to make sure that doesn't happen in the future. Okay, I'm gonna accept the motion to close the hearing.
Doug Mogulyn, so moved.
Jason Perron, second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, hearing is closed. Is there anyone that would like to make motion to approve or disapprove at this time?
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion? Need a second?
Second to motion.
Okay, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn.
Jason Perron, aye.
All right, we thank you as usual, and I thank Charlie and for you guys, because every time I get a better education of this, you know, and learn more each time. All right, we thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're going on to the rest of our agenda. The first thing that I have is a fiscal twenty invoice from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. This is our community block grant program. This is for North Lake Avenue Engineering and Design, Housing Rehabilitation, our Community Food Pantry and Administration, in the amount of five hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents. I need a motion.
Doug Mogulyn, so moved.
Jason Perron, second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay. Let's, I'll go on to the next one. It's for fiscal twenty-one invoice, again, from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. This is part of our community block grant, and this is for Phase One Construction of Bungalow Street Housing Rehabilitation Program, our community folk, our community food pantry administration, in the amount of four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-four cents. I need a motion.
Doug Mogulyn, so moved.
Jason Perron, second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, we're gonna sign these.
Must say, I'm doing a fair job of writing twenty twenty-three versus
I, I
in the first week of January.
I haven't made the mistake yet.
But I don't know.
But I'm gonna, now, I'll probably just do my We're jinxed now. Because we mentioned it, we're jinxed. Goes back to Robin, so she doesn't yell at us. Okay, next thing is under new business. The only thing I have under new business is I've been in conversation with Gene Theroux, who's on our cemetery commission and are also Dickinson School trustee, but he's a very active veteran. And he has reached out to me concerning a veterans tax program, similar to what we have for our senior citizens tax program. Basically, our senior citizens tax program, ten individuals could apply, you know, it's based on income, and they could work off some of their tax.
Westfield program.
Right, right.
Some of the other stuff.
Right, so I, I think it's, it's certainly something that is worth looking into. It certainly would require a town meeting vote, so if, if the board doesn't have any problems, I'd like to begin the process of looking at it, see what other communities are doing, and see if we can recommend some sort of program at annual town meeting.
No objection.
Not a good idea.
As a veteran.
Okay.
I support that a hundred percent.
Okay, then I'd ask that that be add to old business. Okay. I believe that's the only thing that I have under new business. Mr. Mogulyn, new business?
The only thing I have is today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, so thank you to all our officers and staff that work for the Southwood Police Department, to you, Mr. Perron.
Thank you, Mr. Mogulyn.
All right, new business.
This new business. This actually kind of covers the new and one of the old things I was dealing with, regards to the power. The question that Cindy Lamrell had in regards to towns being able to negotiate power rates. Mr. Mogulyn steered me in the right direction. It's called the municipal aggregation program. What it does is it allows basically, it will allow the town to, not to, more or less to negotiate with an individual company. It allows us to work with them to lock in a rate. What I'd like to do is I'd like to actually have Mr. Capandero, I'd like to have, have added to the agenda at some point to have him come in and explain this program in much more in depth. It's actually something people can do now. They can reach out to these different companies and they can search for their rates. What this does is it allows the town, if the town, and this is something that actually, what go, as they do through the town meeting as well, they actually presented me with all the paperwork that other committees have, have used. And basically, that we would just go in front of the town board meeting, if we decided to look into it, and present it to the residents, and it would allow us to contract with a company that would lock, lock in our rates for anywhere between a one and three-year period of time. I, I think anything that can save us money is something that we should look at, whether it be for the residents or the businesses or the town, and this one actually allows all of us to get together to negotiate a better rate. So I'd actually like to have this looked at.
Yeah, nothing wrong with that, looking at anything. I know with my company, we've locked in a rate for three years, and knock on wood, I'm glad we did before, before that rate increase. So it is something that people are doing now, businesses are doing.
Opt-in, opt-out thing, you do not have to do it.
Right.
As you know, if you're doing with your, your business, residents who didn't want to be involved in this can opt right out. And otherwise, they, they're added, and the, the buying power is increased by however many residents or businesses are involved.
Okay, and the person that you wanted to come in is a, a particular business that offers?
He is the, it's the group that Mr. Mogulyn steered me towards. Actually, what ended up happening is there's multiple ones. It's called, was an Xterra with West Springfield. This is what they were negotiating with. They had a three-year contract. I spoke with the central maintenance department over there. And their contract ran out. They started with this, this new company, Colonial Power Group. This year, that's who I spoke to. I would do the research to see, you know, if this is something that you shop around to different booths, or if you just, you know, that part I wouldn't be sure of, but like this, on top of it, it just lets the residents know that there's options for them.
Yeah, I'm, and I'm gonna just throw this out there. Our energy consultant that is advising us on solar, things like that, do you think this would come under her purview too?
Potentially.
I think they do have, there's different credits that are built into the program.
Yeah.
That allows for more green renewable energy.
Yeah, well, this, our consultant on that, you know, isn't basically an energy expert, you know, so I'm wondering if we might reach out to her to get some feedback, you know, in her experience, you know.
Especially in impartial party.
Right, right.
They might even say. They might even say if they like it, go here.
Right, and she, she might not even handle this end of it. I'm not sure, but, uh, I mean, we, she is our consultant, so why not?
Why not use it? As of right now, I just did an assessment. It would save local residents today if we were in the program, about five cents per watt hour.
Right, you wanna add it to old business and, uh. We'll check and see, uh, if our energy consultant actually, uh, could advise us on that. You know. Um, you wanna kind of spearhead this thing?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, Jason's gonna spearhead it. We'll place it under old business and so that we can keep it, uh. In front of us cuz it's gonna get hectic the next few weeks, uh, when we start meeting with different departments and head into the budget season. All right, so we've covered new business, old business. Um, I think you were all here when I asked the chief of police to set up a meeting, uh, concerning North Pond. Uh, so that we can, uh, make sure that we're prepared for springtime. Uh, and address any of the current issues that, uh, are, are being faced there. Uh. We still have not met with the, uh, good mayor of the city of Westfield. On the sewer M N I M A, but, uh, hopefully we'll be doing that, uh. I'm hoping things are going to, uh, kind of get back to normal in the next couple of weeks and, and that we can, uh. Uh, start working on that again. Uh, we've had people out, uh, and, uh. I think that's going in the right direction. Uh, Mr. Moblin did a good job, uh, working with the town clerk. Uh, so that we have our survey on, uh.
Got a lot of feedback on that.
The, the marijuana.
Jump on that.
Okay.
And, um, forty-four responses online so far, and I, as of Friday. The census hasn't gone out yet.
Okay, well, hopefully, cuz I think the census going out is gonna be the big number, you know, you know. Uh, that's where we know exactly who's, who's responding and, uh, uh, that'll be good. And I'm, I'm not, not saying we're gonna share that information of who responded and how they, yeah, I'm just saying that.
I believe it's a separate sheet with something from the fire, so it won't be tied to your census. If you send it back, they'll split it.
Right.
And then we'll look at it.
Right.
I believe.
Yeah. Okay, all right, the marijuana host agreement Hudson Drive, that's between the attorneys, so, you know, that's really out of our, our, uh, court at this time. Uh, I think I told you, we had informal discussions, the C A O and I on the other, uh, marijuana growth facility that is, uh. It looks like it's gonna be taking over by, uh, new, uh, uh, new people. Um. The opening of the housing authority, we posted that, correct, Robin?
On the web, yes.
On the web. And any, any action? No action? Okay, so that's something we want to get out there. Uh, we've added the speed limits on the deer run area, greater deer run area. And we've also added, uh, the health director, the equal eye testing and reporting, and we do have a new health director. Uh, that's, uh, got the email this morning that, uh, we're, we're, that has been finalized. So we will be working with the new person. So I think we're heading in the right direction. With that, old business, Mr. Moblin.
Uh, just following up on the speed limits that was brought up in public comments, was brought up last week and we're carrying it under old business. There was legislation passed by the legislature signed by Charlie Baker on his way out the door to change the process by which, uh, towns can. Uh, change speed limits within areas that are not state numbered route or state highways, and it also changed the process for state highways, but for this discussion here. Um, it simplifies the process a little bit, and I did send that information to, uh, the chief and the lieutenant to review.
Okay, I believe the lieutenant is our safety officer, correct?
He's not, he's not. I don't think he is.
Believe he said he was, but he's not.
Okay, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna find out.
Lieutenant, are you the safety officer?
Oh, yeah, I think he's just pretending to be out there.
Yeah, sorry, I just had to walk out of the room. I was in a little bit loud. Uh, no, I'm not. That's actually Sergeant Miles now.
Sergeant Miles, okay.
But I, I had, I had emailed the chief and the lieutenant the information that they put forward to the safety officer about that.
Okay, thank you, Lieutenant.
No problem.
All right, so. Uh, but as I said prior to the meeting, the good governor signing that. I think this is a, a great time to approach Mass D O T about the speed limit on College Highway South. I don't believe that. We've asked them numerous times to review that. I don't fit, think fifty miles an hour is the appropriate speed limit. For that area, uh, you know, uh, we've had development going on down there. We might have a new growth facility going on down there. Got new houses going in and down there. It, it's certainly not safe for people on bicycles or walking. Uh, there is no really edge, uh, or.
No.
Right, uh, we did have that young man who got hit. Not quite that far down, but, uh, did get hit at nighttime skateboarding. So I think, uh, I'd, I'd like to see the board, uh, at some point. Uh, petition, uh, Mass D O T, uh, under this new, uh, regulation. Jason, old business.
Other than, uh, the tax information that I've always been looking into and I'm gonna look into reaching out to Sue Gore. Mr. Hoyt, have them put it on the agenda at some point.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the best thing. I, I did, uh, tell you previously, uh, that I reached out to Roy Bishop, the consultant. He's on vacation in Florida. Uh, he suggested that you meet, uh, with the board of assessors. He felt that they would be able to handle most of the questions and he would be willing to follow up, uh. You know, with any question that wasn't answered because he does handle all the, the commercial end.
Perfect.
Okay, so with that, any other comments? New business, old business?
All right.
For me, I don't see any need to have an executive session tonight, so with that, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn.
Doug Moblin, so moved.
Jason Perron, seconded.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, I.
Doug Moblin, I.
Jason Perron, I.
All right, thank you, everybody. We will not be meeting next week. It is a, uh, holiday. Uh, so we'll be back, uh, let's see, January twenty-third.
Just looking at the law, I'm sitting here trying to figure it out.
Okay, thank you and good night.
Have a good night.